Welcome to our host board of education meeting for October 24th, 2017. Please join us in pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great to see everybody. You see that we have a full board meeting room today, which is exciting. It's an important meeting for the Board of Ed because we are joined by all our administrators. And in a little while in our meeting, we are going to hear about the vision that rise and directs and really propels teaching in this district. So looking forward to the conversation in just a few minutes. But just first for the record, we're two board members down. Ira Schulman and Laura Stengel could not be here this evening. And I need a motion to appoint Jen Lamia as district clerk.
Second.
On paper. Jane, thanks again for doing that. And we appreciate it. And of course, we wish Greg Harrelson well in his recovery. And we miss you, Greg. And for the record, the meeting was called to order by me at seven o'clock. And we went right into executive session and we discussed five items. We discussed 3.1, which was Board of Education matter, board retreat. 3.2, legal matter, individual student. 3.3, legal matter, transportation. 3.4, legal matter, CSEA. And 3.5, personnel matter, individual employee. Are there any comments from the public of any matters not on tonight's agenda? Since there are none, can I have a motion to adopt our agenda for tonight? And a second?
Second.
And everybody in favor? Okay. And that brings us to our consent agenda. If I have a motion to approve our consent agenda for Personnel, Special Services, and Business. Second. On paper. And we have two special reports this evening. First special report, I'm going to turn it right over to our superintendent.
Our first special report is our Board of Education recognition. So we have a proclamation, you know, which is very exciting for us, signed by your governor. But I'll let you just read that if you want. I'd rather share my own words this evening. So I just want to take a few moments to recognize our Board of Education, our elected members, who we are very fortunate come to us, each individual with a very specific level of expertise. And I just feel like not only are you extraordinary individuals, but you voluntarily govern our schools. And we see the impact of your decisions throughout the entire community. So from the community, I thank you because every decision you make is evidence of your commitment to the students, to the faculty and staff, and to the parents. And your impact is always felt. But as a superintendent, I thank you because your success has positioned all of us for success. And what that means is that you are taking the time to model behaviors and actions and community commitment that we are modeling in the schools. A few years ago, Google captured what they said were the five key dynamics that set successful teams apart. And I think it describes our board. The dynamics are psychological safety. Because of the dynamic you set for psychological safety, we can take risks to benefit our kids. The second dynamic is dependability. And I think you count on each other for a high level of work. Structure and clarity, your goals are clear, our goals together. Meaning of work, I think it's personally important for each of you to serve your community. And the impact of your work in that you believe the work that you do matters. So overall, this is the dynamic by which our board operates. It structures its work, views its contributions. So we want to thank you for being the successful team that models that behavior for the rest of us. It means a lot. Thank you.
(applause). Jen, I know you get paid by them, so I'm going to just chime in. On behalf of the administrators, teachers, staff, and students of the district, thank you for your selfless dedication. I know that you do it all for all of the members of our district. You spend so much time away from your families. You do it all for nothing more than a sandwich and a soda and some good-looking cookies.[293.62][293.62](laughter). So the success of our schools and our students are a direct reflection on your commitment. So we really do want to thank you. We appreciate all that you do. We have a little gift here for you tonight as well. We know that it can never really add up to all that you deserve. So please, again, thank you from all of us.
Oh, such a curiosity.[317.12][317.12](laughter).
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really, really.
This is perfect. Scott, you want to bring it out and give us a monologue? It's really perfect for this climate weather.[337.12][337.12](applause). A little Byron Pride, never hurt anyone.
That was so nice. Thank you. Very touching. I really appreciate that.
We tried to get a sandwich and a soda in there.[351.12][351.12](laughter).
Much better, much better. You know what? I have to say that for me personally, too, I am really proud and honored to be working with such an honorable board and dedicated group of people. And I really feel that this board and previous Board of Eds members that I've worked with, and one thing that I think holds true is that everybody really does try to treat each other respectfully. We don't always agree, but the one thing that we really shoot for, and I think one of the reasons why we have been so successful, is that we listen to each other and we work hard, we work really hard at respecting each other. And we work hard to hire the right person in charge, who then hires everybody else. So it's a well-functioning board and a well-functioning district. And so, you know, and you all make it fun to do this volunteer work. Otherwise, we wouldn't be doing it, right? So thank you to all of you, and thank you for your kind words.
Well, when you look at the divisive boards that exist out there and divisive school communities, we're all fortunate.
Thanks.
Can I say something?
Yes.
It's just, I mean, it's such a pleasure working with the greater team, too. You guys are just, you make it, you make what we do easy and joyful, and it's such a nice team effort. And, you know, as mom, you help our flowers grow.[432.81][432.81](laughter). I stole that from somewhere. I don't know.[437.12][437.12](laughter). One of you. But really, it's a pleasure doing what we do. I know I speak for myself, but because of the team.
So enjoy your week, and you can read your proclamation from the governor if you like when you go home.
Right. Thank you, Governor. We're truly the governor, right?
That was a good move.
Two things, the proclamation and the ADR.[463.21][463.21](laughter).
That's right. We thank him for the proclamation.
Thank you. That was really nice. And now we have our second special report. And this report is going to be our administrator goals. And I remember two years ago, when you came to the board with your visionary approach, Tim, I believe it was your visionary approach, Dr. Donovan gave you credit for the change. And it was the essential questions, right, of what 21st century learning was going to look like, what skills our kids are going to need. And I remember sitting at this meeting two years ago saying, "What?" It was very conceptual. It was very uncomfortable and exciting at the same time. And then last year, you all refined these goals. And this year, you can really see how they are attached to student outcomes. So it is so exciting to see this evolution. So I'm excited to begin this conversation, and I'm going to turn it over to Jen Lamia.
All right. So we started some fun, exciting work at our administrative retreat this summer. We started looking at systems thinking to help guide the next stage of our process. And in particular, we looked at Simon Sinek's model. And what we really care about is getting to the why of what we do. And once we can better define the why of what we do, we can look at the outcomes and we can look at the processes of how we get there. So Tim will explain the process for creating our goals in a moment. But remembering that it's a focus on the purpose, the process, and the results, I want to start tonight's conversation by reading to you my belief statement that was created as a result of our retreat, and it is about our purpose as a district. "The faculty, staff, and administration are proud to provide children in our schools with opportunities to learn that are paramount to a distinctive educational experience. Our goal is to create the leaders of the next generation. To that end, student knowledge and student experiences must serve to advantage students to enter the world educationally fortified and globally competent. We create school environments with a focus on independence, creativity, exploration, and resilience for children. At Byram Hills, we remain student-focused, with robust and involving curricular, athletic, and extracurricular opportunities for our student growth." So we're proud to use that as our purpose statement behind creating the leaders of the next generation. And I am beyond proud to have you here with everybody's been working on this year.
Great. Thank you. And it's an exciting night, so Robin does remind us that two years ago, we submitted our goals on one sheet of paper with just a bunch of questions. And we got away with it. But thank you.[627.79][627.79](laughter). There was a reason, and it led to a lot of exploration, but I want to remind you about the reason, is that there is this changing educational landscape. And we felt like our goals were good, we got into a really good system, but they were silos. And we felt like we really needed to come closer together and start interlocking the work that we're doing. So we wanted to back up and look big picture for a year and explore these big ideas. So through that exploration, we're able now to really start coming together in our purpose. And we focus our goals on this mission statement of creating the leaders for the next generation. And as you hear the conversation tonight, you're going to hear lots of pieces to that puzzle, and you'll start to see overlap between the work that we're doing. So I think our vision is starting to be realized. And eventually, we will be getting to sharing what that impact is on our kids as a result of this work. That shifting landscape is, in my view, based on two things. One is technology and the way technology has flattened the world, making information accessible to us, and creating opportunities for global partnerships. The second piece is the shifting from the information age to the innovation age. New skills and knowledge are required to make students successful in the workforce when they leave high school than in the previous couple decades. So that really drove the work over the past couple years. It's been a lot of research this team has done as we've developed our goals. As Jen said, we come together at the administrative retreat and we look at some leadership frameworks. We look at some literature on 21st century learning. And the content specialists look at the research in their content areas. All of that work, then, through conversation and collaboration, we start to develop goals to create a coherent curriculum and an environment in our schools, K-12, that makes sense for our students. So that it's not a choppy curriculum, but one that's really aligned and focused on a very distinct mission. And I'm hoping that'll come through tonight in our discussion. So I'll start with first a quote from a book that Andrew gave me, and I'll start with Andrew tonight in a moment. I think this quote is relevant, and I haven't shared it with you yet, but I think it's relevant to what you'll hear tonight. "Our job is not to prepare students for some, our job is not to prepare students for something. Our job is to help students prepare themselves for anything." And I like that because that, to me, is the world that we're living in, is where we have to give kids the skills and tools so that they're prepared to do whatever the workforce and the world is going to ask of them when they leave this district. So with that, I will have some questions. The board is, feel free to jump in at any time if something is of interest to you or curious or you're confused, feel free to jump in. And I'll try to moderate this unruly crowd here.[794.12][794.12](laughter). But I do want to start with Andrew, because Andrew and I have talked a lot about empowering students, and we've been working together to think about ways we do that with our faculty as well. So Andrew, your inquiry question is, under what conditions will empowerment go viral? Can you explain what that means? Talk about empowerment.
Sure. So if we're creating the leaders of the next generation, I think a big part of that is empowering students or letting them have ownership of their own destiny, their own direction inside the classroom. We've been really good at engaging students in the classroom, meaning that we're good at getting them interested in our content, our interests, and our curriculum. But empowerment flips that model, and it's that saying, giving students the knowledge and skills to pursue their own passions, their own interests, and their own future. So the essence of my question is really, can we create professional development opportunities that provide those type of a framework for teachers so that in turn, they will then go and do this type of work with students? So can we provide a framework that will eventually go viral?
So with empowerment, I'm wondering if empowering students to pursue interests, to follow their passions, is somewhat contradictory to a public education where we have a set curriculum and set standards that we have to cover with students in our schools?
I don't think so. Actually, I think that we're doing it right now. You can see examples of student empowerment popping up all across the district. And Coman Hill, we have a project right now in digital citizenship where students are putting their physical footprint on a piece of paper, and then throughout the year, adding all of the websites they go to, showing example of they own their footprints on the internet. They, that's their footprint, they have ownership of that direction they take. At Wampas, we have Hub 21, which is designed around this idea that we have to have classes of kids working together, collaborating. It's designed around student empowerment, problem-based learning, design thinking. At HCC, we have the technology curriculum, which you've heard has been redesigned from the ground up over the last three years. And in sixth grade, it was small, one or two-day challenges that students took on. In seventh grade, it become larger, week or two-week client challenges that students took ownership of to their eighth-grade capstone program, which they're launching this year, which will be an entire year of research, where they'll spend a year researching a community that they're involved in and finding a solution that'll help improve that community. They pick the community, they pick the problem, they pick the groups, and they develop the strategy to solve that using all of the tools that they learned through sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, the coding, the electronics, the robotics, all of those in one project that they're doing in eighth grade, which I think has actually led to the high school, where we've seen a doubling of the number of STEAM courses over the last year. And waiting list for some of those courses, where we have students that want to be in them, and we're opening extra sections of them in the high school because the demand of these type of opportunities are what students want, and they're seeing a value in it, and we're seeing value in it.
Yes, one interesting question. In all the schools in our district, we have done a lot, you guys have done a lot, to infuse this type of new 21st century learning into the curriculum. And you're up against a system more broadly that makes that not easy because we have state requirements, and we have the AP curriculum, and we have SATs and ACTs and all these things. And oftentimes, they can be symbiotic, but not always. And sometimes, I think you just have to have, I guess, some structure if they're going to continue to have this system of APs and state tests that we just can't avoid. Is there any sign that there's forward thinking at the college board, forget the state for a second, but at least at the college board, to try to make it a little bit easier so that we can push even more? Because I think, you know, we're going in a great direction. And I guess my question is, is there thinking? And if there's not, how much further can we push before we just kind of get to the edge where we need those folks to come along with us? Sure. We can certainly, I know some people can talk to that. So Lisa, Jen, and Mike, if you have anything else to offer?
Sure. So I can see from the college board's perspective, they have done a little bit of revamping in terms of their expectations. So for example, one of the new courses that Andrew was talking about is our AP Computer Science Principles course. And the underpinnings of that are to try and get folks that were underrepresented in computer science. So both females and minorities, getting them involved in programming. So their stance was not to take a traditional approach with the course. And there is a two-hour exam in May that's kind of a traditional sit-down, but it's actually what we call language agnostic, which means it's their own kind of pseudo-coded, and you can do the course itself in whatever language you want. It could be a very basic language, or it could be something much more in-depth. And then they have the students do two kind of portfolio tasks throughout the year. One is something called the Explore Task, and they explore a new technology innovation. And they have the choice of making a movie about it, or they can make a poster. So there's all sorts of different things they can do. And then they have this other task called the Create Task, where they create an application. And what's really interesting about that is when the AP board came up with this course, they initially wanted to require students to work together on that Create Task because they were so, in such a belief that that really is kind of where we're going, and collaboration is key. The one reason they didn't require is because you have some students that are homeschooled, and so they would be at a disadvantage for it. But I will say that it is strongly recommended that students work together on the things that they're submitting to the college board, and they're also encouraged to use things that are available on the internet. And that could mean someone else's code that they're taking, as long as they're citing it appropriately and using it within their own context.
Interesting.
You know, in the history APs, there's been a big shift over the past couple of years, too. And even though there are still very rigorous content standards, the driving force of the AP exam is historical thinking skills. And so it's really about can students interact with historical documents, interpret it, and make conclusions? And it's less about do they know sort of X, Y, and Z? And as a result, there's more choice built in the course for teachers and kids, so you don't have to know everything. There are selections of things that you can choose, teachers and kids, as long as you can demonstrate the high level of thinking behind it. I think that's been a good shift.
So analysis rather than facts.
Yeah. And we are having a new regents exam next year in 10th grade, and it's modeled after the AP. So things are moving, I think, in the right direction.
I had another, excuse me, I had another point. Colleges are doing, across the country, what we're doing here, and it's been beautifully described by Andrew. So if you think of a seamless K to 16 model, we tend to think K to 12, but think four more years. And the leaders of colleges and universities, that's deans of schools and prominent faculty, top researchers from all the great schools, are asking the college board to change and to align itself with what we're doing and what college and university professors want, and ultimately, those out in the various employment sectors. I'll close on this point. I've been in the field for 44 years. I've never seen alignment discussions that are that comprehensive. So I think it's going to be a positive 10 to 20 years coming up for all of us.
Even though we might be waiting for the college board also, we're not waiting to see what colleges are expecting. So Lisa and Andrew are working on a project this year where they're going to a couple of heavy-hitting colleges, Byram Hills students, you know, lots of applicants, lots of entrants every year, to see what's happening in their engineering courses, what courses are they offering, what are they teaching like? And interviewing our alumni who are in those schools to say, you know, what type of preparation did you need to get here to start taking these courses? So we really do take a K-16 approach.
Just want to say that we also, we don't throw out the traditional assessments and a variety of other assessments. We want to make sure that the projects that we're having have a high level of content rigor as well, so that that's built in there as well. And we're checking the students along the way, too, to make sure that they're getting the content within the context of these larger problems. So it's not an all or nothing, and we're trying to do a mixed model.
Okay. Thanks. I figure, okay. And there was some research we used several years back, which looked at freshman, survey of freshman college professors and what they wanted from schools. And they, what they really wanted was for high schools to be teaching kids how to learn. It wasn't so much the content, given the foundation of content that is described by AP exams and such, but show, teach kids how to learn. When they get to college, we'll be the content specialist that get them where they want to go based on their specialization. That was over a decade ago, that research. I know things are shifting even more. And speaking of some of this shift, why don't we, Andrew started talking a little bit about the STEAM courses. You know, we started several new STEAM courses at the high school, and Lisa talked about the Computer Science Principles. So both Deb and Lisa are involved in the other STEAM courses. So could you each talk a little bit about that evaluation of how you see those STEAM courses fitting into the curriculum and how students are responding?
Sure. So you heard a bit about the social studies and the technology and math standards, but I think since we've gone over the last 10 years or so to a shift to more national standards, there's so many connections and overlaps on the shift going from more teacher-centered delivering content to more student-centered and the teacher being the facilitator of, like Tim said, how students learn. So the beauty of our STEAM elective courses that we are offering this year in the science department, one is our robotics class. And I think there was a brief presentation that happened here last year where Mr. Lichten came in and showed you that that was a pilot going on within our science, technology, and society elective. So we took that unit and created it as a standalone course. And it's remarkably positive results from students when you go in. The students are doing design thinking, there's a lot of engineering practices, science practices. And it's the ultimate performance assessment type of class, where students are building, but they're also learning C++ coding. And they actually have to prepare these robots to complete challenges, where they will attend a competition where they have to, these robots have to perform various tasks, and they compete against other students from other schools.
And how do kids actually learn the skills that are needed to code and build a robot?
There's a lot of different methodologies that are used in the class. Some students have experience in building, and others are just going there for the first time because it's the course that they heard was a lot of fun and they like Mr. Lichten. So they start off at all different locations and end ultimately at the same place. However, they can use computers, and they can use a software through Vex Robotics, and they could work on learning how to code and use a virtual robot. And the virtual robot will show them whether or not their coding skills are accurate. Other students who may feel like they have a stronger background in code actually just get so excited to go right to the build and start building their robot and then do the coding later. And then the collaboration that occurs in the room is pretty miraculous because what starts to happen is no matter where students begin their journey on how they want to tackle the building and actual movement of this robot and the completion of the task, at end, all of the students are excited about their work. And you could just hear a buzz in the room and this, not a bad competitive edge, but a way that students just want to see, what are your robots doing? How do we get ours to do that? And the creativity is pretty amazing at what they end up doing, trying to get their robots to either toss a foam star or just battle one another in trying to be the best group to pick up these cubes and all these different various items. So it's an exciting experience for them, where there's so much learning that goes on during the process. The other elective that we've implemented is sort of a modification of our science, technology, and society course, which was a one-year course. And we divided it into two modules. STS1, we're calling, Module One, is inventions, innovations, and forensics. And there's, I think the names are pretty self-explanatory, but everything is project-based. So the students really enjoy taking risks and doing all different things that are based on choices that they can make themselves, on where they want to take different projects within those titles. And we've had very, very good feedback for the students because it's an autonomous learning environment, but also it's a place where the students don't feel like they're preparing for high-stakes tests. And I think that you just see a different dimension of a student when you're in an environment with them and they're exploring, rather than feeling like they have all this pressure of producing, you know, different results on exams. And then STS Module Two is our aeronautics and medical technology module, where they will be learning the science of flight, and they will actually be using flight simulators. Last year, we took them into the auditorium, and they actually were using the flight simulator technology on the huge screen. So they actually felt the power of what it might be to fly an aircraft of that magnitude. And then we take a trip to the Intrepid, and they do all different types of interactive activities there. And then through the medical technology unit, they study things like the Da Vinci robots and all different types of medical advances that they can study on their own based on their interest.
Thank you.
Good. That's a question. So the classes that you're talking about now were their high school classes, right? And I would assume there are multiple grades of students. Is that correct?
Yes. So typically, they're 11th and 12th graders. But we do allow other students in there, let's say hypothetically, there's, you know, a student that one of the courses would be related to their science research project, or a student really just needs a class based on the way their schedule is following. We do make exceptions. But traditionally and typically, we like to keep it down to 11th and 12th graders.
So this evolution in sort of the way we're approaching teaching and learning in our schools, do you notice a difference in the grades of children, like the ones that have been with our district for a long time? Is it sort of a different way of thinking for them? Are they able to grasp this different kind of teaching and learning style as maybe the younger cohorts? Or is it pretty seamless, would you say?
At this particular point, I can't speak to maybe like from the elementary schools. I do know that the students are a little uncomfortable at first having free rein, meaning that, you know, if it's not a test or quiz at the end of a unit in high school, they might feel like that's what they want at first. But when they start to recognize that there's other ways to evaluate their learning and their development of skills, then it starts to be this eureka, wow, I don't always have to be, you know, evaluated based on, you know, regurgitating facts. There's more to my learning than just that.
Lisa, can you speak? You talked a bit about the AP Computer Science Principles. You also have the pathways in engineering.
There's more to my learning than just that.
Lisa, can you speak? You talked a bit about the AP computer science principles. They also have the pathways in engineering as another class, and how, both of those classes, how are students responding? And to Robin's question, do they, they're upperclassmen, so do they have the skill set and readiness for that type of learning?
Well, it's interesting for principals. In the first week, I gave them a little graph. One had a wire set to geek out in math for a little bit. That started up here with your required knowledge, and then the other started at zero. And I said, which do you think we are for this class? And, you know, just to alleviate any stress, I said, we're starting from zero here. The assumption is you come to this class knowing nothing. And I think it took a lot of the stress off kids, and they were more willing to explore because of that. I will tell you two really cool moments that have happened recently in class. One is one of my kids came in today with some actual like pictures that she took with her phone of her computer of something that went wrong. And now, as a result of our class, like she feels like she has the confidence to go out, research, actually get into the console of the computer, like do things in order to fix it. And she was just like so proud that she had, she's like, look at this, and then look what I did, and this was so great. And then we were also able to join both computer science classes. So there's been a little bit of a halo effect, not just in the new classes, but just kind of extending to some of our other electives as well. So last Friday, we had someone from industry who is a, someone that worked in a startup that helps other startups start up. So she's kind of a startup incubator. And she talked to the kids about what does a modern-day programmer look like, you know, and what does someone that's in technology look like, and what kind of skills are we looking for? And so that was great for our kids to get exposure to just that kind of knowledge. And then she also was able to talk about diversity in the workplace and the benefits and how they build diverse teams, which was great. And then in our pathways in engineering class, the kids are really having ball, just kind of exploring their own interests. So we've got kind of, you know, a faction of kids that are really interested in coming up with like models at the school and using 3D printing, maybe building an app that people could use to like tour the school. And then you have, you know, this subgroup of kids that seems really interested in creating these tables that are mobile, like people that have disabilities that might be able to, you know, benefit from this kind of thing. So the kids are really driving a lot of the learning and of the interest, and I think they're just tremendously excited by it.
So Lisa, while I'm on you, I just, I'm looking at your quick question.
Yeah.
And it's curious, as you talked about, why is math instruction still relevant? So can you speak to why that's an important question today to explore and maybe relate that also to the types of courses and the work that's happening in math classrooms?
Sure, absolutely. So nobody ever accused a mathematician of not being existential. So we like to kind of question our own worthiness. So I think a lot of, a lot of, you know, the folks that are in the department now kind of went through school at a time, and you may have remembered getting handed a treat table at some point, or a table of live values, these bring back bad memories for some folks. So, you know, at that point in time, we didn't have technology that was available that would do these calculations for us, right? And so not only did schools value it, but companies, right, and employers would value people that could come in with computational skills. But what we're finding is that's no longer the place in the workforce, nor is it something that we really value in school. So rather than putting the emphasis on, okay, memorizing procedures and knowing how to just simply execute a problem, the real emphasis is around the why and the exploration and getting kids to grapple and giving them rich tasks that they could make some hypotheses in the same way that you would do it in a science classroom or an engineering classroom, and test, you know, test their conjectures, make revisions, et cetera.
Right, that's great. And I've got another question for you, but it escaped me, so.
Can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
I know, I think one of the things that Lisa said that also rang true in the elective is it gives us the opportunity to really introduce students to different career paths. I think in the robotics and the STS courses, we do a lot of work in allowing students to reflect on the projects that they're doing and the learning that they're gaining from these projects and what opportunities are available to pursue post-high school or post-secondary. And I think that that's a big opportunity in an elective that you can take time out and have a guest speaker, like Dr. Wolin, the chiropractor from town, is coming in to talk about techs next. So we don't only talk about the pros of technology, we talk also about some of the cons in technology. So I think when students see those different opportunities available, they can have those moments where they say, aha, I can do something like this, and I can use this in my real life, which speaks to Tim's like and Jen's why.
And so Lisa, I recall what I wanted to start focusing on now is we're grappling with this idea of this type of learning environment, and also with reading the standards and requirements. I presented to the board last spring on our shift in the mathematics accelerated pathways, and that we were creating some new pathways for acceleration. So we're in our first year of delaying that decision to accelerate students from sixth grade to the end of seventh grade, and so we're keeping all our kids together in seventh grade right now. Can you speak to how that curriculum is working and what you're seeing from both the teachers and the students?
So we're really seeing a tremendous amount of excitement, both from our educators as well as the kids in the room. The kids are grappling, and they're making conjectures, and they're toying with math, and they're talking about math, but not just that day and not just the next day, but days and weeks later, they're coming back in and they're saying, I had another thought about this, or I thought about it differently, or what if we explored this? So you'll hear Tim and I a lot of times in conversations with folks talking about rich tasks, and I think about, what does that mean, like it's a rich task? So to give you an example, and something maybe you want to go home and ponder tonight, you know, when you get home at 11:00, is like, you know, we might say to kids, like, you had a three-by-three cube, and you dipped it in paint. How many faces of the cube have one side that has paint, two sides, three sides, or all sides that have paint? And so kids can take that at very different levels. So someone might enter it in just a three-by-three cube and start actually painting something and seeing how many sides have each. And then someone else might take it to a totally different level and say, you know what, I'm going to extrapolate that, not just to a four-by-four or five-by-five, but what about an N-by-N? And then I could make this conjecture and that conjecture and this analysis. And it's really amazing to see, and I think that's what's really exciting. And that's what our teachers are seeing in the classroom, is just everybody's able to access these problems, but they're accessing it in different ways and at different levels that are appropriate for each of the learners.
So someone who's taught math, that seems like from a teacher's point of view, that could be really difficult. What do I do as kids go off in these different directions? And how do I ensure that we're addressing content that is important to cover?
Right. So it does seem intimidating at first, and I think our teachers, as they've kind of gone through this, have done a good job anticipating where things might go. And one of their kind of, you know, techniques that if you ever pop into their class, you might see them do is they walk around with an index card, and they just kind of take little notes, you know, okay, well, who said this, and Scott said that. And then when they tie things together, they do it in a very intentional order, where they'll maybe start with something like, oh, Michael, he said something interesting in his group. Why don't you say more about that, right? And then they'll know that that's going to lead into something Scott said, and they'll have that in their index card. And so they're able to kind of tie it together that way in a way that's, you know, almost, you know, magical, like a magician, where something's going on behind the scenes, but the kids don't realize it, and they just kind of, the only thing that they realize was, oh, my voice was heard. Oh, my voice was heard, too. And it's really, it's empowering for them. And then just to tie it back to one of Scott's points from earlier in terms, and I always feel conflicted whether I should mention the state test, but I've only mentioned it in this respect. Our seventh-grade teachers made this tremendous shift last year with these rich tasks and these varied levels, and their mean score for the test, not in any intention of preparing for the test, they were number one in the state. So that, to me, was just powerful, not that we're necessarily teaching to that, but just that you can do this type of teaching and still be okay.
It sounds like we're able to take more risks with this program.
Absolutely.
And it sounds like the children are more comfortable. I don't know if you changed your grading, or it sounds like they're more comfortable wrapping their head around these risks.
Absolutely. I think on a grading spectrum, we're at varied levels, so some people have made drastic changes in grading, and some people are kind of just dipping their toe in. But I think the kids are responding to that, which is great, and they are absolutely more comfortable taking risks.
And Lori mentioned risk-taking, so let me just go over to the middle school, and we're talking about seventh grade, over to Kim and Angelo, where your essential question talks about risk-taking, it talks about embracing rigor and a healthy mindset. Can you talk about why this question, it seems like there's a lot in there. Why is this important in a middle school to ask that question?
You know, when you think about the middle school, we're beginning to prepare our students to help our students transition from elementary to secondary education. I know that the high school talks about self-actualization, and so we're helping our students a little earlier in the journey, starting to figure out who they are, what their interests are, what their skills are. And we want to support them academically and emotionally and socially. We want to give them voice and choice. And what they do, you know, we're talking about risk-taking, we want them to feel empowered to take risks in the classroom. We want them to engage in rigorous activities and also to be in touch with how that makes them feel. So, you know, part of the beauty of being in the middle school is that we can provide them with these kind of structures to explore. And in all our talking, what I was thinking about was whether you're talking about problem-based learning, or you're talking about math constructivism, or you're talking, all what our students are doing is they're getting the message at a very early age that their voice and that their inspiration matters, and that we give them structures. And maybe a little bit more in middle school, we'll provide them a little bit more structure, they'll be, they'll know a little bit more of what's expected, but we're letting them go and to pursue their passions because that's what really matters, is their pursuit of what interests them. And that's relevant to, and it always is relevant to our curriculums.
And we also like to model what we want to see from our students. So Kim and I are committed to modeling, just called models, I guess. For our teachers on how to be risk-takers and how to not always have or to be perfect, but to learn through, through, I think, the journey, basically, and scaffold for kids what we want to, what we want to see.
So can you give examples of that from both maybe your point of view in terms of, say, the operations of the school, and also from a curricular point of view, what that looks like?
So we've been working with SAEL. SAEL is our Students Acting in Leadership.
Like their student government?
Which is our student government, but we sort of change it where every student can have a voice and there is no real leader. Students are given the opportunity to be leaders at different times on different committees. So I'm currently working with the cafeteria redesign committee, so.
A lot of parents happy.
And the public service announcement committee. So that's a whole, it's a whole. So kids, kids have complained over the years about the cafeteria not being, you know, conducive to their, to their social lives. So, so we sort of model how to gather data, what to look for, what questions to ask their peers, how to come up with a game plan, whether their ideas are, you know, can we do them? Is it within the budget? You know, give them best case scenario. But we go through several steps, and they're going to have to make some presentations to adults in the community, to the board, I believe. One group is going to, one group is going to present. But to give them real-world life experiences, you know, take them out of the classroom and into the community and into the real world.
Giving them skills to do that work, and that's sort of a model and framework.
Right.
The first time ever, this board meeting is going to go viral because you said something about changing middle school.
Well, they said. We'll start with they said, and then we're going to see whether it's practical enough. And they'll decide whether it's practical enough.
It's great.
Over, I guess, over the years, there's been a lot of thought at HCC around like the time spent on each subject, and then obviously, as there have been new initiatives, all, you know, the tech curriculum kind of infused in, you had to make room for all that and be creative. Do you think at this point, the time allocated to different subjects, it makes sense and is the right mix, or is that something you're thinking about?
I do think it still fits, and partly because the teachers have kept in mind the colonial unit that they just did in social studies. So they didn't really add or subtract, they just modified what they were doing. So they turned the unit around, and instead of teaching it typically, where you learn about your different regions and 13 colonies and the founders and the, they, the teacher shifted it to make it so that students had to sell, learn about the colonies, and then sell real estate to interested investors. And the investors had particular things they were looking for, and then those students had to take what they learned and then determine what colonies and what areas would best fit those investors' needs. So it might have taken a little more time, but I actually think the timing stayed, it was just shifting how you approached each of these units. And I will tell you that that's, that was a risk for our seventh-grade teachers to take, but the energy that came out of it, one of the teachers said, I have never felt so alive, and they then immediately went to their next unit to look at how they, again, the content can remain the same, but how you teach it and how you're getting the kids to be engaged with it is what's changing. And there's a lot, it also happened last year, they were inspired by allowing kids to decide whose voices weren't heard. And I think they were looking at this right around the Civil War time about what voices were and weren't heard. And then they moved that into, if you look at today's, in today's world, whose voices aren't heard? And that moved into a voice unit or a voices unit that, again, problem-based, who isn't being heard, what are their issues, and then how are we going to best be able to convey their needs to other people? So, so far, they've been able to manage that time element very well.
You know, and I just think because of the beauty of the team structure, there is some flexibility in that. So there is some flexibility in time, they sit together, they look at the week ahead, and they can make adjustments that fit the curriculum and fit the kids. So I think that team structure helps with that.
And the hope is also, that's a great point, that as a capstone, say, expands, there'll be opportunities for each of the disciplines to find their own niche within the capstone and then have some of their curriculum become part of the capstone curriculum, so that, again, eventually you start to see each of the disciplines kind of become part of the other, and you won't be able to tell the difference. That would be an ideal world, because that creates, so.
So can you bring up the idea of addressing issues in our social studies curriculum? And I want to go to Jen to talk more about that, because you mentioned one of your goals about promoting productive discussion and civil discourse.
Yeah.
Given the political times. I avoid that with my friends and family. I don't know what you're doing in the classroom, you know, you're taking that on. But what does that look like, and how are you teaching civil discourse in the classroom?
Yeah, so we took that on this year, and we felt like, is there anything more important currently going on in our country than the need for us to learn how to have civil discourse? And we all believe that, you know, that really is the number-one priority. And so we started as a six-to-12 department, and we did some research, and we read some of the latest thinking about teaching civil discourse and how do you do it? And some of the things are just as simple as having classroom norms. What are the norms in this classroom in terms of discussion? What does that look like? How do we respect each other's opinions? How do we listen? And really, the key is listen to understand instead of speak to convince. And so if you're really engaging in civil discourse, it's about uncovering what the other person really thinks and why. And so that's what teachers have done, is establish some of their classroom norms and then practice it. And the idea being, we're going to work towards getting better at it. When you have a discussion, you remind the class of the classroom norms, you try out the discussion, and at the end of the discussion, you go, how'd we do? Let's look. Did we really listen to understand? Did we give everybody their time they needed? Did we respect each other's opinions? And it's a slow-evolving process, but I think when you say it's important and we're going to stop and reflect on it, I think the students see that as well.
I'm hearing a lot of self-reflection being built into our curriculum as a result, or the cognitive processing about how I'm doing. That seems to be essential to that.
Definitely.
Let's talk then, well, actually, Dwayne, I want to ask about you, because you talk about self-exploration and critical inquiry being important in reading and writing. Can you speak to what that means and what that looks like in the classroom? And is that all related? Is there any connection to what Jen is talking about in the classroom as well, about how we get kids to interact with discussions and understanding, maybe not always political times, but texts they're reading, literature and things like that?
And texts can become political, too. I mean, there's a reason that 1984 rocketed up the charts over the last couple of years. And in a certain way, I think conversations about texts have that ability to draw polarizations, if you will. But the critical thinking, I mean, we, we've had this same question in the English department for three years now, what does it mean to be literate in the 21st century? But it's, it's really morphed over the years. It started as almost an exploration of some of the tools that are out there, the technological tools, social networking and things like that. And yes, you can do some critical thinking there. Yes, you can participate in a social network in a way that's respectful of one another. But this year, we really went back to, and you'll understand why I say this, but forgive the pun, we went back to a well, and it sort of began with a reading of a Seamus Haney poem that I looked at over the summer called "Person the Helicon." And the end refrain of the poem is one where he imagines himself as a young boy looking into these wells and sees his image in the pool of water. And the final refrain is that we, we rhyme to set the darkness echoing. And that became sort of a mantra for us this year. So I know you asked about critical thinking and critical reflection. We often tell our students that we read and we write because we want to get to know ourselves better, because we want to get to know the world we live in better. And I think it's probably the most important thing that we can. And I think it's probably the most important thing that we can do with our students, is to help them, uh, process everything that they're looking at. The books themselves change from class to class, they're going to change, from teacher to teacher, they sometimes change. And the books are probably less important than the critical thinking that happens when we pick up a book. Um, I can't tell you how many times I've had parents say, you know, "Why aren't you teaching King Lear? That's my favorite Shakespeare play. Why are you still doing Macbeth of this?" And, you know, I always go back to the idea that, again, the book, uh, is important, but it's a vehicle. And what's it a vehicle for? It's a vehicle for that introspection, uh, and that critical inquiry. And, and that really hasn't changed too much. I mean, that was a part of the English classroom 20 years ago, but the English classrooms change. You might remember your own English classrooms, um, mine were full of multiple choice tests, mine were full of teachers telling you what to think. And so now, we're at a point where we really want students to understand how to develop their own thoughts about a work of literature.
As we think about this, um, learning to understand self, you were involved with, with Jen and Melissa on Global Scholars Program. So if you recall from last year, as part of our Global Competency Initiative, uh, these three administrators, um, created a three-year program in Year One at the Global Scholars Program. So, it's in its infancy, I know, and I'm sure you're learning a lot. So can you speak a little bit to what you're learning about just the curriculum of a Global Scholars Program, because it seems daunting, and how are students engaging in it even though it's early in the year? Whoever wants to start with that?
Sure, sure. The first thing I'll say is that what Jen was just talking about in terms of discussion and the importance of having civil discourse, this has filtered into our classroom. We spent time having the students arrive at their own discussion norms. Uh, we didn't give them to them. Uh, they came up with what a productive discussion looks like. We post them up on the, on the screens before we actually have a discussion. Uh, and we've had a variety of times where that's happened. Um, I think what we're finding, and I know that Jen and Melissa will probably say the same thing, is that what's really interesting for, I think, our students and for us, is that it's no longer a single discipline. You know, history finds its way into our classroom on a daily basis. Science, I mean, I was explaining to a student the other day why deforestation contributes to CO2 levels in the atmosphere. I've never had that conversation before. This is just not part of the English teacher's arsenal. But it's, it gives me really, you know, it's amazing, and I think the students, um, I don't know that they see us. I had to remind the students the other day, when I was doing a mini lesson on annotation, that I am the English chairperson, and that I have taught English classes for, uh, you know, 20 years here. And so, it shouldn't be too much of a shock that I want to talk to you about it, I annotated an article.
I think what's exciting about it is, we're thinking, um, in a way that we're teaching real important skills. And so the skills are anything from research about investigating the world, but the skills are also recognizing multiple perspectives, communicating your ideas, and then finally, I think the most exciting is taking action. And so it's not just about learning and understanding and communicating, what can you do with it? And so we're building in opportunities for kids to learn deep content, become experts in content, but then, hopefully instilling in them the responsibility that when you really know and understand, you can take action to make a difference. And so they'll be doing that throughout the year in different, in different opportunities.
And then the other side of that, you know, we've heard a lot about collaboration and the multiple perspectives, and that's where the language piece comes in, because although research and investigation is a, a major part of this, it's that human-to-human contact, and how can you relay what your points are? And how can you do that without being offensive to someone else, um, either in their native language or in your native language? And I think that that's the second piece that we're doing in this Global Scholars Program, is talking to them about respecting where someone's knowledge is coming from, their prior experience, and also their values, whether that's based on a religion, or a country that they come from, or something like that, so that there's open communication, respectful communication as well.
What's the role of world languages specifically?
So we just started, um, doing pull-out sessions, little mini sessions, and I really had an aha moment this summer when I was in Nicaragua, and then later in Argentina, and I thought about it from my language program as well, as I'm sitting there trying to deal, uh, talk to people in communities, and then I was wrangling 65 students in Argentina, teaching them about STEM. I realized, not once did I go to pen and paper to talk about the language or to get my point across. So, it was a moment of, take away the pen and paper, and how can you just communicate with someone face to face? You know, no longer was, um, the conjugations or the accents important when I was trying to get across how to build a, a statue on one cube to these 13-year-old boys, it was how can I communicate to them, um, and how can they have me understand it? So I thought about our students and how could they be there? I was in a program fortunate enough to see 15-year-olds in a situation like that. So when I approached the Global Scholars Program, what do they need to, you know, whether it's Spanish, French, Italian, Chinese, Russian, Arabic, what do you need to communicate with somebody else? And there's a basic understanding of, you're coming from a different perspective, it's different than mine, and I have to appreciate that.
Are there challenges you're facing, or you anticipate facing, as you go forward with the Global Scholars Program?
I think one of, I mean, for me, one of the challenges that I've seen, because we are focused so much on process, uh, we, we spoke to the students even about the first two assignments that we had them do. One was to create a poster that demonstrated their own, um, understanding of global competency, and you'll see those throughout the high school if you walk through the halls. Uh, and the other was to produce a movie that created an argument for why global competency matters. Now, I say that those were their two, you know, two assessments that we opened the year with, but we spoke to the students on several occasions about how we were less concerned about the quality of the poster and/or the movie, and we were more concerned with how they worked with each other in groups. Did they give alternate viewpoints a chance to be heard? Did they listen to somebody who may have had a point, or even try to get somebody who was a little bit quiet and reticent, um, to speak up and to offer, uh, input? How did they, uh, go through this process? And we had them evaluate that. And I think about what Andrew's talked about tonight, I think about, you know, some of the project-based learning that's going on across our disciplines. And to me, again, it goes back to what you mentioned with the colleges. Those are the skills that are gonna make them successful in the workplace, those are the skills that are gonna make them successful in college. Uh, yes, we have some wonderful content, but that's, that's our challenge. And, you know, right from the beginning, I think I've recognized that that is the challenge. In fact, it was a, a mindset switch for students who kept on saying, "Is this okay? Is this poster okay?" And we would push it back at them, "Well, yeah, who helped you, you know, who contributed to, you know, your ideas, all of that?"
And, and just one additional thing, which we think is a real-world applicable skill, is the skill of giving, and then receiving and reflecting on feedback. And so each step along the process, we have different, uh, a different protocol that we use, where the kids will give each other feedback on their work, and they're getting much better at it. But then, it's what do you do with that feedback? How do you then think about it? Do you internalize it, and then do you act on it? And I think, uh, that's something we'll incorporate throughout, because we know, I mean, that's how the work gets better, when you, you're open to that feedback, and you really think critically about it.
And are you guiding them in how to provide that feedback? I know we've seen science research do that before, I think that's probably what you're talking about, that same thing.
Yeah, so we have a, a particular protocol that we follow, um, in how to, uh, give feedback on work, and we've got stuff with that.
Just a little talent to, for them to learn how to...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we modeled it for them.
And we modeled it for them first, and, yeah.
You're not the only modelist.
And we keep practicing. And they're getting better. And the greatest thing was when kids would say, "That feedback was so helpful. That really changed my work."
What else, I guess, also, it, it, in a way, forces everybody, you know, all the students to be aware and involved in their peers' presentation as well, too. And it sounds like the students are more involved in their own self-assessment.
Exactly.
Yeah, so Robin, you made a great connection between, that focus on process, between Global Scholars and science research, where there is a huge focus on process in science research. At the same time, kids are learning really deep content, as you know from when they come up to talk about their, you know, their research and their presentations. And it's that balance that I think makes it work, and makes kids comfortable with it. With that focus on, on process, it makes me think of Chris's, um, inquiry question, which is, how do we promote development of our students to be self-actualized?
Hold on, it's a big word there.
Yeah, so can you help us understand why this is important? Give us your understanding or your meaning of self-actualization for high school students?
Yeah, absolutely. As I'm sitting here, just listening to our chairs and directors, just amazed at the, the depth of what they're doing and how far they're bringing our students apart, uh, along. From what, where I sit, I need to be able to look through a lens, um, in terms of all student outcomes. So last year, I took, uh, my first year, really investigating at a deep level, what does it mean to be a Byram Hills graduate in the 21st century? What that really led me to was to come back to our, our mission and really focus on the outcomes. So I kept coming back to this idea of self-actualization. And self-actualization is, uh, our need to develop within our students, a need to become what they have the potential to be, which is pretty lofty. And so when we're thinking about self-actualization, we're not just thinking about those college acceptances, we're not just thinking about their ability to score on these different levels of exams, we're not, we're not thinking about how well they do in one particular area, we're looking at it holistically. So, self-actualization, it's really based on Maslow's hierarchy, which is a psychological, um, framework. And that framework really goes into looking at students' basic needs, all the way up to their esteem needs, and then eventually to their, uh, self-actualization needs. So we've really been looking at, uh, what we're doing in the high school through that lens with our, with our faculty. A lot of times, we, you know, in hearing all these things, we never once really mention, are our kids getting enough sleep? Are our kids eating enough? So this framework and the way we're looking at it really causes us to have to look at that and to ask those questions. Are we really impacting our students on a holistic level? What can we do, um, on a broader level to make sure that they're getting everything they need? We know that they can't get up to that, those higher levels unless we're meeting those lower-level needs, and that's really what, uh, the work that we've been doing this year has been centered around.
Is there a readiness with faculty to approach this? Have you started training and working with faculty, and what that, how that translates to the classroom?
Yeah, it's, uh, it sort of, it sort of amazed me, the, the amount of self-reflection that the teachers had when they really started to look into it. Light bulbs started to go off, and some of them even said, "Oh my God, I think I'm contributing to this lack of student sleep." And so, um, which was, uh, you know, rare for a teacher to, to say that, um, that they maybe had a connection to that. So to really start to, we looked at it through our faculty meeting, and it's something that's been, um, threaded throughout a lot of our conversations throughout the year, and will continue to be. So we really wanted to start with basic needs and then move up to see where we can actually start chipping the way.
And you've talked about trying to collect some quantitative data related to this type of work, to wellness overall and the, the environment. And you've mentioned, um, something called the Challenge Success in your goals?
Yes.
Can you explain what that is?
Yeah, we're very excited about that. It's a collaboration, uh, between the middle school and the high school. We were lucky enough to, uh, get a grant from the BAGF to allow us to bring in Challenge Success, which is an organization out of the, uh, Stanford University. And what they really have been doing over the last few years, uh, they're going to schools and they really take a, it's almost like they're taking an, an overall physical of the school. So they really look at the student's experience, and they have an instrument, a survey instrument that they utilize. Students in the middle school and the high school will spend about a half hour to 40 minutes, um, utilizing this survey. And then we work in consultation with, uh, Stanford University and Challenge Success to really implement a lot of the, uh, feedback that they give us. So each school is going to have different steering committees, made up of parents, administrators, teachers, and most importantly, students, to see where this work is gonna take us. Looking at some of the schools that they've worked with, uh, in the past, some things might come up where just a hunch, they might tell us that 26 minutes for lunch is not enough, um, and then we may have to start looking into that. Uh, they may tell us that we don't have enough areas where students can just decompress and, uh, and get away for a little bit. They may tell us that our rigor is high, but our homework can maybe be shifted. They may tell us that we don't have enough homework. But what's important is that it's an outside organization, and it's not us, um, looking at ourselves and, and pointing the light. It's an outside organization that's been vetted, um, and they're gonna be looking at us and working with us.
I know, I saw a lot of you on Friday at Mark Brackett's talk, but it was a lot about this. It was eye-opening and very sad to see all the, the surveys he'd done of kids, high school and, and up, and the teachers, and the results were pretty consistent that, you know, that they were not happy, that they were stressed and overwhelmed and sad, and I mean, it was, it was...
Yeah, we, uh, you know, that was echoed on Thursday night with the University of Michigan panel. A lot of the, uh, data is, um, you know, if you're looking at it, it can be very frightening. And we have to keep in mind that our seniors, uh, were eight years old when the iPhone came out. So they've been, um, in this, you know, what we're calling iGen, they've been at it for 10 years, and they don't know life without, uh, their smartphones. They also don't know life without social media. So when we look at it and we hear, you know, I think what you're saying is, are we seeing increased rates of stress and anxiety in our children? I think we have to look at it through that lens, that these are all very new things, and we've never been through it, so we don't know. We don't have a way to go down and experience from eight years old till the time they're seniors, what life is like in that world. So we have some qualitative data, but we don't have that quantitative data yet.
So with Challenge Success, do you, I guess, do you get benchmarked against other schools like us? Is that what they do? And then, do you, um, ultimately, survey everybody, or is it just samples of students?
Uh, good, great question. We first learned about this when Bill Donahue and I were on a tri-states team, uh, that was in Scarsdale last year, and they had, they had, uh, brought in Challenge Success. Uh, what they taught, what they spoke about was they really liked that you would be able to give, they, they would give us examples of other schools that were similar to ours, and what their challenges were, and how they overcame them. So, we won't be benchmarked, but it, uh, it will be, um, it will be compiled with their, with their data to be then reported back to us.
Got it.
We're going to, uh, get all of the students, we're going to survey them, we're trying to survey everybody quick enough, we want to do it before the seniors start getting into college, because we still want them stressed.
Yeah, you should do a survey before after and see the difference.
Yeah, sure. It would skew like, oh, the seniors are having a, a time in their life.
I, I would add, um, brief comment, that when I saw the, the goals laid out in these questions, I was quite skeptical of how that would actually tie back to an educational, um, fit, not, you know, just kind of observing and taking it in. I've been, um, very encouraged by tonight's discussion, and I would tell everyone to keep pushing, because the leaders of the next generation, which, not to get political right now, but, but certainly it's easy to do that today, um, we need this openness and this feedback loop, and, and all the criteria and the discussion points, I think, are so, so relevant. So, just from my standpoint, I'm thrilled to hear the dialogue and, and pushing in this direction. And the one thing didn't come out, I think a lot of colleges, at least I've seen personally, a number of the schools are test optional, more of the schools are test optional. So I think we're all realizing as a community that, you know, some of those things are less relevant today, given whether it's technology, the evolution that we've all had, so, anyway, my, just kudos to everyone in the room.
Thank you, Mike. And we, you know, we all have read the New York Times Magazine article from a few weekends ago, and we've been thinking about it, and at least we know we're not alone in this, um, challenge that we face. And I do like the fact that we are addressing it straight on, but we're not addressing it in a way of trying to get around, you know, the easy curriculum. We still know we have to have a rigorous, well-articulated curriculum, and how do we do that in the context of today's times, and with the goals that we have in mind for the school and preparing kids when they leave here?
And not only is it, and that article was, you know, primarily about high school, and then you can make the same exact argument for college campuses.
You can.
Because college campuses are having the same issues that American high schools are facing, if not worse, probably worse. So anything we can armor our kids with now, will hopefully make their lives a lot easier when they get to college.
Yeah. So let me go toward the elementary grade as we start to wrap this up soon, because I know Mary Beth, um, in your goal, you talk about creating leaders, um, and creating the foundation for leadership, and I wonder if some of these issues are resonating with you. But what does that mean for these young five and six and seven-year-old students to be leaders? Could you use a little insight into that?
Sure. There's actually a lot of opportunities at home and how for students to, um, be leaders. One example, um, is really students being leaders of their own educational goals. So for example, we have, um, something that's called our staircase writing rubric, and this is a 10-point rubric where all students from kindergarten to second grade have a spot to live on that rubric. So, I was in a second grade classroom, they were doing a narrative writing, you know, So I was in a second grade classroom, they were doing a narrative writing unit of study. And one of the students, they're working in partners and they're reading their writing. And one student said, you know, I would give this writing a score of an eight on the rubric. And, and she explained why. I'd give myself a score of an eight because I have a beginning, a middle, and an ending. And then she and her partner proceeded to look at this writing rubric and then make goals. And she started off by saying, well, I think I need to add more details. And I did press a little bit and asked her and said, well, what do you mean by details? What is that? And she explained how she could have added some dialogue into her piece. And she also explained that when she was writing the setting, instead of saying one day, she could have said like, one sweltering hot summer day. So her vocabulary and word choice. But this is just one example of our students really taking a leadership role in their own educational interests and, and pursuing that.
And I think we were hearing examples of what that's going to look like as they progress. So as we start to build that foundation with the young learners, hopefully these become more natural skills that we just refine as they get older.
Well, just to piggyback on what Jen said about the discourse, I think maybe we need to hear some of what you do because when the two don't agree with what their grades should be, so maybe we can learn.
Okay, in the discussion.
Yeah. And then in your building, you were really a pioneer of the emotional intelligence work at Wampus and has done a lot of work there. So can you give us some insight into how that work around emotional intelligence connects to the classroom and to content? And also maybe to the operations as well? If you can speak to both of those.
We're in our second year of cohort training through the, through Mark Brackett's group at Yale. And basically, I think you've heard through just about everybody here tonight that there's an element of looking at the whole child and that accessibility to learning can be impacted by not being in a good place emotionally. And research is showing that really emotions can impact things like judgment and decision-making and motivation and innovation and creativity. So I think that we're all talking the same language in the sense that we really have to address those kinds of parts of our children as opposed to just the academics. So we've been working at, looking at ways to embed what the children are wanting from the mood meter, which is a four quadrant tool that is identified by colors. And the colors have feeling words in between. So while they have voice and choice in the middle school, we have name and tame it in Wampus. And basically the children are learning how, learning the right vocabulary for the way they feel, instead of just using generic things like I feel angry or I'm in the blue because I feel sad. There are other words that can be in the blue and those have different strategies to help you feel better. So we're, we're getting the children to start learning those strategies, which I think will be trickling up over the next couple of years in terms of being able to have discourse and, and being able to hear each other's perspectives. I was in a classroom, we've also been, been saying, we don't want this to be a standalone kind of thing. We want it to really thread through our children's day and, and the culture of our school. So the teachers were working a lot over the last year on where could this naturally fit in the curriculum so that it's not like this isolated kind of a skill lesson. So a, a good example from my perspective is last week I was in a third grade classroom and the teacher had, she developed a lesson or a cluster of lessons on how children can identify characters' traits and how they change over time based on certain events that might happen. So she had the children reading together, there's, there was a collaborative approach to this. And they had to identify, they had to stop at certain points in the story and put the characters on one of the quadrants in the mood meter and provide evidence from what they were reading. I think that she feels disappointed because when he said this, whatever, whatever. And then they'd read some more and stop again and something happened to her that made her feel better. So now she's in a different quadrant. So that really got into a rich discussion about how characters and ourselves, because and part of it was how does this, how does this work with you? So the understanding was that characters change over the course of a story based on certain events that happen and that that's fluid. So they could be angry in the beginning, really happy in the middle, but back to angry towards the end. And that's always indirect relationship to some kind of an event that's going on. So the kids got into some very deep discussions about how that would make the character feel. And the wrap-up to that was, you know, so, so can you share with your partners a time that you felt one way in a quadrant and something happened and changed you into a different feeling? So that's, that's kind of an integrate, that's kind of an integrated curriculum piece. But then we found that, and Judy's gonna, I think she's got a good example, an operational piece on how this works in the bigger school culture.
So I had a student visit my office recently who was sent to me because he was really disruptive in his instrument class. And he was interrupting a lot and he was antsy a lot and was unprepared. So he came down to my office and I showed him the mood meter around my door and I said, where, where are we? And he said, I'm in the blue, I'm very, I'm very frustrated. And I'm, I'm a little sad too. And I asked him to explain and he said, I, I, you know, I'm forward today because I forgot my instrument. I remembered, put a post-it next to my bed, it was gone in the morning and I forgot my instrument. So I'm talking to people because I, I don't have my instrument. So I said, okay, so how do you want to feel when you're in this class? And he stopped for a minute and he said, I want to feel proud. I, I think I'm pretty good. I practice. And I, I said, oh, proud. Do you, so do you feel proud now? And he said, no, I don't know. We talked about how he could achieve that. And he said, he was going to use the calendar on his refrigerator to, to mark down the days when he needed to remember it. The sticky note wasn't going to work anymore. And, and another thing, I really like to be called on because I do, I know a lot and I'm not getting called on because I'm getting in trouble. I said, all right, what do you think you can do in, in this case to really, you know, make that better? I, I, I think I need to talk to my teacher. I said, go, 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 go. So he did. And shortly after, I, I heard from the teacher and he said, we had a great conversation. And ever since then, this kid is, is like shining in this class and he's beaming when he sees me, feeling proud. Right? So he just needed to identify and name it and tame it. But we talked about strategies and just talking about how he wanted to feel just turned the whole thing around.
It's not about getting in trouble anymore.
Right, right.
So it's really about, you know, when we are dealing with these things, we're really trying to maximize opportunities to engage in the curriculum and learning.
There's no dunce cap.
So Robin, we're just past the hour mark, so you can wrap it up now if you would like? There's other questions people want to ask?
Any other questions or is there any?
I think we heard from most people.
I would say one thing, which is what's amazing about this conversation is if you go back just a few years, I mean, think about my time in the B H E F, but along the last couple of years on the board, all the things that we talked about tonight are new and different and really represent change. And that's pretty unusual in any organization. And people give public schools a bad rap. But in all seriousness, this is, this is really incredible how much change has been instilled into all four of our schools in every which way. So it's, you're changing your, your approach around social emotional learning and it's, it's changing curriculum in creating new classes and new modules. And so I really think that you guys should be proud of all the work that you've done because it's, it's overwhelming when you think about where we come.
And there's challenges and obstacles along the way and that's part of the work we do at retreat and we work hard at helping each other. But you're looking at an amazing group of people who come together to help each other. And it's really about the bigger, bigger mission.
What I really admire is that it takes a long time to make these decisions, even though it may seem new to you from a few years ago, it's been years in the making. And it's about talking to each other and speculating about what could happen and researching what's out there and trying little pockets of it before we feel confident to move forward with it.
And also what's incredible to me is, you know, we're a pretty well-respected school district, I would say. We're, I think it's safe to say we're maybe ambit a little bit and credible. So we could, and we're successful. Our, our kids are successful by all measures. And we could easily continue on the path that we've been doing, but the innovation and the steps that you're taking to keep our district moving forward is, is really just incredible. And just wanted to thank all of you for coming here tonight and presenting this to us. And thank you for putting this together.
I think we're also practicing what we're preaching. You're, you're taking risks with this curriculum and we're showing the kids that, you know, as a district, we're going to take these risks too. I like the fact that you still maintain some, some sort of balance. I'm not a fan of standardized testing, but I think it has its place. And I'm glad that it's not, it's still being worked in where, where it fits. You know, otherwise we have no way to evaluate, I mean, some of these things are very intangible and we have no way to evaluate ourselves. And we want to make sure that the standards are still being maintained. You know, I think if you get too far into the intangible, we don't know if we're still doing well. The other thing that sort of jumped out when you were talking about the, the constant feedback, the anytime feedback, you know, I'm on, I'm on the, the other end of this where I, I work for, I work with and I employ millennials who are coming out of this. And I'm seeing the other side of this, which is that we've got this generation of kids who need this, have this constant need for feedback and reinforcement and stroking and it's, it's, oh, it's infuriating. And how do we, how do we strike that balance with, you know, where not only are we giving them the feedback that they need to grow, but we're not making them so dependent on that feedback from others, that they, they're also able to congratulate themselves and feel good about something they've, they've done without somebody else adding them on the back and saying, good job, you know? And it's a balancing act.
Thank you. Great, this was fantastic, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll take a two-minute break. We won't make you stay for policy because that's what's meant.
Unless you really want to.
Comprehensive attendance policy. Could I have that motion just a second?
Second.
Okay. And we had no changes, we looked at this before. Is there anything else that we, anybody wants to add?
No, there were no changes. We had the policy committee this week. I'll just summarize two brief, the, the two brief changes to this policy. This was last, um, last updated in 2015, so there weren't a lot of changes. But we needed to include some new language from a regulation to remove negative consequences for absences due to homelessness. And that was a requirement. And we used the NISBA recommended language, so it was pretty straightforward and simple and we did feel that was important to include. And we also made one other change, just based on feedback from the high school, of changing everywhere where it referenced a letter of notification to written communication. Chris and the assistant principals want to pilot trying to send emails when we get to students having excessive absences. We think we'll get a quicker response from parents than actually putting a letter in the mail. So we, those were two changes made to this policy.
You actually have a question about, I know we talked about that last time, it's just a question. So in the email, will they require a response or does it not really, is it just?
Um, in some cases, there has to be, parents have to actually come in for a meeting, there has to be communication that way. So generally there is, because there has to be interventions for students when it gets to a certain level.
Okay.
Yeah, so there'll be responses. But in some cases, like a semester course, you go from eight absences, you get notified, and then again at 10 absences. That kid may reach that by the time that letter gets home and then parents get upset they didn't know sooner. So we've, we, and it's, the, the policy says you have to have written communication. We are finding parents respond quicker to email than they will, you know, the postal service.
Sure, okay. Any other comments on this, all favor? So that's done, right? That's hoot. Okay, great, thank you.
We will update the policy.
Fantastic. So now we're, we're moving to new business and I'm going to just, before we talk about this, just ask for a motion to accept Byram Hills Education Foundation Fall 2017 Direct Giving Grant. A motion to accept it in a second. Okay.
This is really exciting, yeah. So, you know, we, we've been watching, I've been watching since I think 1994, the evolution of the Education Foundation and the impact it's been having on our schools. And I think that this is one of the first times that they're really picking up on a K-12 initiative and that the foundation signature grants are reflective of the K-12 initiative and it is our wellness initiative. So what we are looking at is at Comen Hill, creating an indoor playground for children and that really supports the work of studying play that's happening at the elementary level. A lot of the conversations that we heard tonight were about getting kids to the point that they can work well together. And having teachers at a very young age be able to watch that happen and figure out what skills kids are not possessing in their interactions with each other, it really informs what they're going to do in the classroom with kids. So we're really excited about that. Also at Wampus, we have an outdoor obstacle course, which is great for engaging and challenging kids to be in collaborative competition with each other. At the middle school and the high school, you heard Kim and Chris talk about the Stanford Success Challenge and really just finding out those key points about kids and the importance of having quantitative data, sixth grade through 12th grade, about children's sleep, about their stress level, about socialization, about pressures they feel at school, supports they feel at school or at home, and really getting a better perspective. And culminating, uh, part of that also culminating in two different projects at each building. So at the middle school, turning the old weight room into a wellness center where it's going to have a mindfulness area and a physical fitness area. And that is what's going to happen in those areas will be informed by the Stanford Success Challenge. And at the high school, the creation of the Wellness Den. Many of our kids congregate in the library and, you know, no fault of our own, when all of these buildings were created, they were not created with the thought that kids should sit and regroup and have some time to process their lives and their academics and be comfortable in their setting. You know, we really are brick and mortar for a reason. And this is creating a space in the library for kids and it's called the Wellness Den. So we're very excited that the B H E F is backing a school-wide initiative and to us it's enormous. And the collaboration occurred with each principal really talking to their faculty and staff and determining what the needs were at their building. So we're very appreciative.
That's exciting.
And very.
And is it tomorrow where there's going to be?
Yes, so yes, tomorrow night we are having an awareness night, a B H E F Awareness Night. I will be at Wampus at seven o'clock. We would love anyone from the public to come. I will be there with all four of the principals and Andrew Taylor, Melissa Stahl, and we will be presenting not only the tremendous impact that former grants have had on the district, but also giving a preview chance for parents to go and listen to what the initiatives are for this year. So it should be very exciting, seven o'clock at Wampus. We would love for people to come.
Great, so fantastic. And thank you to everyone that's contributed and that's going to contribute to this direct giving and thank you to the Education Foundation. Any other comments before we vote and accepting it?
The other thing I liked, because I was at the meeting, the grant meeting, was that the Stanford group will not only take the surveys from everybody, but they'll come back with a blueprint. And they're not going to just disappear, they're going to come and check in and make sure it's working. And Jen has assured us that these, um, these surveys that the children will be taking are very kid-friendly and very...
I previewed the survey items. I was just concerned about what kinds of questions they're going to be asking middle schoolers or high schoolers.
Right, what are you probing?
Particularly about stress and I felt very comfortable with the questions that were selected. And they give you the opportunity to take out questions you're not comfortable with.
Is the survey one-time or is it over a couple of years?
It's a one-time. And when do results?
I mean, certainly we could do the survey again in a number of years, it would be interesting to see.
How's it work?
Well, let's see the results.
Yeah.
And, and as you were saying, Lori, the blueprint is so important for us because it's going to guide whatever we're going to be doing in schools after that.
So when do we get that blueprint? What's...
So they were hoping to do the survey sometime in November. And it'll take them probably two months to get us information back. Then they'll come in for a consultation about what they found and we'll co-develop a blueprint of where we need to go. Yeah. It's been very successful at Scarsdale and they've made a lot of changes to their school. And each school's very unique. So, you know, while Scarsdale, for example, tries not to have tests, more than two tests on a night, you get sort of a voucher, they call it something else, but, you know, to postpone your test for another day, that might not necessarily work at Byram Hills. So, you know, you'll take your own population and customize your blueprint.
Well, once again, you can see how the Education Foundation is partnering with the school district and what our initiatives are together. So it's, it's wonderful. We did that with technology and doing this with wellness, so wonderful partnership.
I can think of how in the real world, you, if you had two tasks to do the same day, you'd give your client or something a voucher and...
Yes. Right. The problem with it is though, you have to do it the next day. That's where I like to know if it works for us. I'm gonna postpone your stress until tomorrow. But it's working well for them, and they've been, you know, their community has been very responsive to the results as well, which I anticipate from our community, people care about.
Absolutely.
How their children are faring.
All in favor? With gratitude? Look forward to seeing those come into play. Okay. Staff reports.
All right, here I go. So, not only did we have marked bracket, and we had the University of Michigan last week, Tuesday and Thursday, prior to the University of Michigan, I hosted a working parents committee meeting, and then I brought those parents into the University of Michigan panel discussion. So, it was a really nice time, I know it's difficult for working parents, I'm not sure how many watch our board meetings, but to be really informed about K-12 initiatives and what we're doing in the schools, particularly, I focused on leadership, math, and our wellness initiative. We'll be having another working parent meeting, another request came in, so we'll do another one in the spring, they were really excited to have that opportunity, and I'm happy to give it. Just some upcoming events, we have tomorrow night, the BHEF Awareness at Wampus, as I said, I hope people will come. We have on the 26th, Thursday, so we have a pretty packed week, we like to have a lot of community events here, though. We have our cum laude induction ceremony at Byram Hills High School to celebrate our top 10% of seniors who will be inducted, they will represent really outstanding academic achievement and attainment of scholarship. Our keynote speaker is our very own Chris Walsh, so it's a must-attend event. And then, on the 27th, on Friday, this is, you know, this is what I love about our community, we are planning a Disney trip for the music students at the high school in the spring, and it's a really great opportunity for the students to go, to not only have specific instruction, but to, there will be adjudicators there, and they will really get some good feedback, some outside feedback about their performances. And knowing that the cost is a difficult burden for some people to bear, many of the teachers have come together and they're going to be hosting Byram's Broadway, which will be Friday night at seven o'clock at Byram Hills High School, and the proceeds will benefit the students who will be traveling musicians in the spring.
Are you singing?
Which I think is great. I am, I can play basketball for the Wizards, but I will not sing. No one wants, there's no comic relief there. Also, upcoming events, this is exciting, November 2nd and November 7th, November 2nd at Wampus and the 7th at Coman Hill, Melissa Stahl, who is the World Language Chairperson, will be hosting the Byram Hills High School World Language Club, they'll be offering little mini lessons in French, Italian, Spanish, activities for children at Coman Hill and at Wampus on those two different days. So, there are permission slips that have come out, and thank you to Melissa Stahl and to the students who are in that club in the high school who will be facilitating those afternoons for our elementary children.
So, it's after school?
After school, yeah.
That's great.
And we have, I like to end with student success stories, so we've had a lot, I want to recognize, first of all, 66 students were inducted into the World Language Honor Society, which is pretty incredible. Those are students who have had three consecutive years in a language with a final average of an A. So, I think that that's pretty outstanding. We also had a lot of musical awards, but John Skara, who's a senior, was invited to play the cello as a member of the All-National Symphony Orchestra, which is beyond anything that we would have imagined. And also, we have three all-state ensemble students who will be playing Shay Gordon in mixed chorus, Dominique Karen-Fillion with treble chorus, and Brent Pearlman for symphonic band. So, we're excited that students have individual as well as group, you know, we're watching, Ira's not here to give us a sports update, I'm a little, I'm remiss, but, you know, it's nice that we have students who are in individual competitions who are really exceeding. And finally, we have our Siemens semifinalist. This was an incredibly hot day at the high school, Alexandra Burcato, who is in the Authentic Science Research Program, is, her area of research is in bioinformatics, and her mentors, two of them are from Harvard University, where she studied in the Rubin Laboratory, in their Department of Stem Cell and Regenerative Biology. I can't believe high school kids are doing this, but her area is spinal muscular atrophy, and out of the 1,800 projects that were submitted to Siemens, 491 are recognized, and she's one of eight students in Westchester.
That's great.
So, really outstanding, congratulations to our kids. I always like to end on that great kid note.
Great accomplishment.
It's why we're here.
Fantastic.
To celebrate them.
Thank you. That brings us to committee and board reports, anybody have any committee or board reports?
At the Education Foundation, they're going to be screening Screenagers, I believe it's in November, correct?
Yeah.
So, please RSVP, because it's so nice that they're hosting this movie, it's about growing up in front of screens, and you can bring your children with you, but they need RCPs, and if they have too many RCPs, they're happy to do it twice, they just wanted to know a number of how many people would be interested. Supposedly, it's an amazing, amazing, was it?
And at the Westchester Putnam School Board Association, there's a lot of work being done right now on advocacy, and I think there's a really good effort this year to just make sure that everything's tied into the superintendent's efforts, and we have a former superintendent from RINAC that's really doing a good job of just trying to get everything to be really thoughtful and organized and on-point and realistic, so that we can fight for things that hopefully collectively we can try to get within the confines of the overall environment. So, I think there's more to come in the next month on specifically, you know, what the focus will be, but I was encouraged to just listen to the discussion and see how they're approaching it. The other thing that, you know, has come up is, and not much control over this particular issue that we have as a school board, but if there is tax reform that includes in it lack of deductibility for state and local income taxes and property taxes, that is a serious, serious change that will impact many in our community, not, you know, if you itemize deductions, and so it'll make, for some people, school taxes literally twice as extensive as they are right now. So, it's just one of those things that we just need to continue to monitor and think about, and who knows what will happen with the legislation, but it's certainly being seriously considered, and so, yeah, it's critical for us, and we talked about that at the School Board Association, that and really what could happen to, you know, healthcare still in terms of block granting Medicaid, which would impact New York State's budget quite dramatically, and the two biggest items in the budget are education and healthcare, so. So, there's still a lot of like these macro, you know, serious concerns from fiscal perspective, but we'll just keep monitoring.
I'm at least encouraged by the bridge between the two associations, the superintendent and the Westchester Putnam School Boards. At least we'll be speaking with a solid voice.
Definitely.
Great, thank you.
One, we had, last Friday, we had our Athletic Advisory Committee meeting that Lara and I attended, you know, just to mention Matt Allen had his 250th win, which I know we mentioned last, but Matt was at the meeting, gave a nice little presentation, and it's great to have, yeah, it's a pretty amazing hallmark, so. We, the Bobcat Booster, I guess the Boosters had presented the participation at Homecoming, and just the, you know, donations that they've received have been much more significant this year, seems like a broader participation in the community to the Booster, which I give the leadership of the Boosters a lot of credit for that. The Athletic Community Service focus is still there, High Socks for Hope Charity, which is a charitable organization created by David Robertson, one of the New York Yankees' foundation, collecting money for natural disasters in Puerto Rico, he sent a plane to Puerto Rico with mattresses there, I mean, pretty amazing stuff, but I know the district had a focus around collecting money for that, and I just thought it was great that we continue to focus on community service within our athletic programs and kind of tie those two things back together. And then, Robert talked a little bit about a number of potential new intermural programs, one, the girls' golf program, potential program, there's a big interest in boys' volleyball and bowling, and kind of looking at those athletic programs and the possibility for including those in the future.
Can you say intermural, so it's, is it the middle school then for all those, or was that just the college?
What they've done now so far is it's, my understanding is just interest level, I guess they had, for boys' volleyball, they had a ton of kids come out to informational meeting, so I think at this point, these are strictly, you know, informational and determining what kind of participation levels we would have at the schools.
That would probably be, I would assume, a winter sport?
Would be a winter sport.
Which is great, because that's...
And bowling would be winter as well.
A lot of the participation, great.
And then, there's a quick update on the facilities, which, you know, I think we had talked about at our meeting, and then lastly, the website, Brett, the Assistant Director of Athletics, has spent a lot of time really building out that website, and I think for those of us who haven't looked at it, it's great.
It's amazing, but it's pretty hot.
Yeah, they're doing a great job there, and I wanted to make sure I noted that.
It's completely changed the whole athletic portion of that.
So, and it's great. And then, lastly, the facilities update, which we talked about as well, but I had notated the amazing contribution that we got from ASO with respect to fields and soccer, and I just think that that, again, even though we talked about it last week in our last board meeting, I think it was important to mention it again, so.
It's exciting, and we, you know, have some bleachers that are, have already been ordered for those areas, it's gonna really look nice. It'll make a big difference.
Great. And I just, we'll note that the town liaison meeting is gonna take place this Friday. Any other reports? Any topics for future agendas or requests for information? Very none, I don't really have a report, but you're mentioning Matt Allen and his 250th win, the boys' soccer team is playing, they're still in playoffs, and they're playing again on Thursday, so.
Versus Beacon.
Versus Beacon.
I looked it up, because I was sad that Ira wasn't here to tell us.
Are there any of the other teams that are still in any of our other fall sports?
So, we have some modified teams, we have varsity boys' soccer, we have field hockey.
Field hockey is playing in Somers tomorrow.
Wow.
And that's a program that was in complete disarray with not many wins at all, and so, you know, big kudos to the girls.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
And varsity tennis played today, so we'll see how that, they got to play indoors.
So, the season's, the fall season's winding down, and then pretty soon, winter sports. All right, communications to the board, none that I'm aware of. Can I have a motion to approve our Board of Education minutes for October 10?
Some.
Second?
Second.
Any changes, or in favor? Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
And I mentioned before that we had met in the executive session prior for the items that I talked about before, can I have a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? Good night, thank you for watching.
Happy Board of Education Appreciation Meeting.
Thanks, I love it, I love it.